Next is approving the agenda. The chair seeks a motion.
Sir, second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any?
Comments or debate?
Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No? Motion carries. Next item is electing a chair for the planning commission. Is there any update you have on this Donovan, or do we just need to go into our business?
I think you're just winging it.
Okay. So, I'll seek a nomination.
I nominate Eric Langness for chair.
Second.
There's a nomination and second. Is there discussion?
Move election by acclamation.
Second.
There's a motion and second by acclamation. Is there discussion on that? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No? Motion carries. Thank you. That leaves a vacancy for vice chair. I would seek a nomination for the office of vice chair.
I nominate Susan Young, second.
There's a nomination and a second. Is there any discussion on Susan Young as vice chair? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No?
No.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the St. Clair-Brooks residential subdivision concept plan. So for this item, we'll have staff, specifically Donovan, present the staff position on this, and then we'll have the developer have an opportunity to talk. If the commission wishes, we can allow members of the public to speak, and then it'll come back to the commission for a decision, or a recommendation to the council. Donovan?
Thank you, Chair Langness. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Plan Commission like to present the concept plan for the St. Clair-Brooks subdivision. This is located partly on the site in which there was a ten acre subdivision that came before the Plan Commission in 2017. And that subdivision roughly is bounded by this hay-mown area. This is the northwest corner of Tanner's Brook Golf Course. This is Fenway, and Highway 61, and then Headwaters Parkway to the north there. The project site is 16.5 acres. Seventeen single-family lots are proposed. The the concept plan review criteria include looking at the and commenting on the concept plan's acceptability in relation to the comprehensive plan, development regulations, and utility availability. The plan itself basically has two connections to Fenway Avenue to the west. And so we can see, zero in first on the northern portion. It's a stub road with 100-foot radius, temporary cul-de-sac at the end of it. There's one outlot. There are wetlands throughout the properties. You can see here and here. As well as there, another section is proposed to the south, another connection to Fenway, with, you know, another outlot containing wetlands, and several more home sites. All, so, majority of these due front Tanner's Brook Golf Course here. As far as the the process in which the city has reviewed this, there was a pre-submitting meeting on March 7th, and city staff, myself and the city engineer, provided feedback to the applicant regarding what's needed for residential development in Forest Lake. We went, reviewed the wetland delineation rules, and discussed the additional right-of-way easements that would be required. We also discussed the utilities that would be required, both sanitary sewer and public water, as well as stormwater facilities that would be required. And then also additional permitting that's required through Met Council, Rice Creek Watershed District, Department of Health for water main extension, and stormwater permit, et cetera. And so that was on March 7th. The plans, the criteria in which the Plan Commission reviews these concept plans, firstly through the comprehensive plan. This area has overall density planned for 3.6 acres per units per acre. This plan has approximately one unit per acre, which is not uncommon in Forest Lake with its numerous wetland areas. And if you do the MXR-1 zoning, the minimum 15,000 square foot lot, it's near impossible to actually get, you know, that sort of density. The MXR-1 zoning for this area does envision attached units to gain that comprehensive plan density of 3.6. And so the single-family units are, you know, compatible with the permitted land use for this property. The lot dimensions, you know, as I mentioned, is 15,000 square feet. All the lots have at least that minimum area. There are nine lots that I calculate may not have the adequate width of 80 feet at the building setback line. That would be a matter of rejiggering some of the lines. And also I should mention that, actually, one of the areas, there's a lot one, block two, on that northern section that has a cul-de-sac that would take out some of the lot area and that lot dimension would have to be a common move to make sure we meet that 15,000 square foot lot area minimum. The street design has adequate dimensions. The fire chief reviewed the street lengths, and with fire hydrants, they're adequate for emergency response. The, so that's it for the development regulations, the quick overview. As far as utility availability, as we can see on that overhead, the green line represents the 36-inch Met Council interceptor line. It's the regional sewer line that runs south from Karenell, Forest Lake's sanitary sewer line, sewer discharge, south. And this is a situation where actually the, you know, the proposal could tap into that line with Met Council's permission. The, Mr. Jensen, who's here, the applicant, has submitted a concept plan showing the sewer line, sewer line, with two connections shown in blue here to the Met Council line, one from that northern section and one for the southern section. The, this was reviewed by the city engineer, and based on the knowledge, you know, data here, there's a strong, strong belief that on this western end, on both of these lines, that they would be too shallow below this minimum five-foot depth for both the trunk and service lines, and they could freeze in the wintertime. And that's an ongoing concern with different parts in Forest Lake. And so, but the, actually remedy for this would be to raise the street one to one and a half feet to take care of that. So that could be accommodated. The larger concern is that, it's based on the city engineer's experience, that the Met Council would not approve two connections in this close a proximity that were only proposed to serve these many homes. Of course, that could be remedied by installing a lift station to get the sewer line to run up to this northern area, perhaps if that one's chosen. So there's definitely concern among staff as far as the sanitary sewer line. The the applicant also submitted a plan for, well, it's the city plan for water availability with a statement that it would be accessed, you know, from the Fenway line, which is, well, it's easy to show you on the overhead here. You can see that basically the city water is a stub here on, just south of the, just in the southeast quadrant of the Headwaters and Fenway intersection. At this point, this, I don't believe this is adequate, you know, utility availability for the water. Since there was no pipe size or location identified for the water other than what the city, you know, has provided. The, also in Mr. Jensen's narrative, and also you see a note in the meeting summary from March 7th, the, Mr. Jensen, you know, has a desire to purchase city property here. This, approximately 17 acres or so, that would be somewhere along here, again, providing more homes along the Tanner's Brook Golf Course. This has been a discussion with Mr. Jensen, myself, and the city for about 10 months now. Mr. Jensen first approached me back in May of last year, asking if he could purchase city property. I said, "Let's take it to the EDA." And so, on June 18th of last year, the, I'm sorry, let's take it first to City Council. During that workshop on the 18th of June, the City Council met that proposal with the perspective that they really wanted to study the city land to find out what's the best land use for it. This is approximately 117 acres, and it is, you know, has proximity to water and sewer. And the city sees this as potentially as a, many things, you know, perhaps is a, you know, in the future land use plan, it's mixed commercial. There's one's interest in a data center for this particular site. And so before, moving forward with any sort of sale, the city wants to investigate, well, what is the best land use for this area? And so, that was the message from June of 2018. Then also, this message was repeated in July of 2018 with the EDA. And again with, you know, the mayor and EDA saying that they wanted to take a look at this property in more in-depth, before they make a sale. And so, I had conversations with Mr. Jensen along the way. And so, starting in January and February of this year, Mr. Jensen was submitting concept plans to me. They included, you know, parcel lines on city property. And I told him that the city would not sign any application, and that this time, this time the city's not going to sell this property. But we went back and forth. And so finally on March, well, let me jump back a little bit. But we, you know, we did discuss this property in February, at the, we have a monthly engineers meeting. And at that point, I did provide Mr. Jensen with some feedback on, you know, there had to be, you know, some stormwater facilities presented in the concept plan, as well as, you know, the sizes and locations of where the public water needs to come from, which would be both along Fenway and perhaps also from another place just off of an eastern portion of Headwaters Parkway in order to loop the water, in order to have adequate fire hydrant pressure and good water quality. And so, you know, I requested in late March, you know, after we received a concept plan that simply had these lots on the Tanner's Brook property, you know, as you see. You know, I did request again information from Mr. Jensen on the utility availability. And I made that request twice, and finally last Friday, he provided the statement that you have. So I believe it's really incomplete information. And so at this point, as far as the utility, water utility availability, and so at this point, it is a staff recommendation of denial for this concept plan. I'm happy to take any questions from the Plan Commission.
Other questions? Member Keen?
Yeah, what's, what's in that empty lot between Lot 7 and 8? It's on the corner. What is it? Or is that Lot 8, is that big? It goes all the way up to Fenway?
This one here?
No, down, right below it, yes, right there.
That is, that is all of Lot 8.
That's all 8, okay. Yeah, that's it. I wasn't sure because my lines on here looked like it, where it comes down. I thought that might be property line or future park or something.
Other questions for staff? Mr. Vanny?
Seems to me that either the sewer's going to work or it's not. I mean, don't we have standards that we require work to, that would require sewer to be a certain depth? This is, and there's, isn't there an engineering solution to this problem? Either it will work or it won't work?
Well, certainly. I mean, that's more, we get into the preliminary plating in those conversations to actually design that. So this is, being concept, you know, yes, there are solutions, and we're providing feedback to the developer on what that solution might be. Either, you know, raising the level of the grade at the road, or, you know...
Yeah, I can appreciate that as a possible solution, that, I don't think that makes any sense, but, you know, I suppose it's it's possible if money wasn't an issue, but money is an issue, so that's probably not going to happen. So, so that's the sewer. So there isn't, this is, this kind of plat, preliminary plat drawing here, and it's not that, but just a layout of lots is really all that you got. You didn't get anything that showed potential location of stormwater management areas or for this?
No, I mean, there were multiple requests, even dating back to that first council workshop.
That was part of what you asked for. Okay, I just want to make sure on that.
Other questions? Member Keen?
So, so what are you requesting from us tonight? If this is just, I mean, it's just a preliminary?
It's just a preliminary.
It's not a preliminary. And it's with a lot of questions?
I'm sorry, it's, well, it's a preliminary, it's a concept plan.
Oh, concept plan, okay.
Yeah, thank you, Mike.
With a lot of questions?
It's a, it's a concept plan. The zoning code provides the ability for the council, I mean, sorry, the Plan Commission to make a recommendation, or they could table it, seeking more information from the applicant. But that'd be a recommendation that go to council. Also, kind of as part of the context of it, is to provide that informal feedback to the applicant to improve the project. You know, because there are many things here, like regarding the lot width. You know, it just could be a matter of, you know, rejiggering lot lines, or that one lot that's at the end of the road. Those are things that, you know, could easily be remedied. You know, but it's valuable information as you go, is, you know, if the project's going forward and you're doing, you know, the design work.
When they said that, you know, that sewer, sewer line is a foot, a foot and a half off, it's too high. Is that to tie it into the Met line?
No, no, that's simply on the western side of it. You need to, you know, maintain that 2% grade.
It's got a slope down.
And so it gets too shallow as you go, you know, it's...
But from the west side to the Met line, it's, it wouldn't have that 2%?
It would, but it's, as it rises up toward the Fenway area, and there's more, you know, of course, you know, Mr. Goodman, the city engineer's very thorough, so, I mean, I didn't, I spared you the whole, he delineated actually the lot numbers. I provided this information to Mr. Jensen as well. But, yeah, if you want to get into the details of it, we could go into, you know, into Ryan's.
No, I mean, just basically, so the ground, the whole land, the land slopes away down. So that's why it'd be, it'd be short just at the Fenway area, and, but it'd be fine on the eastern end.
Well, it's pretty, I mean, it's pretty flat along there. I'm seeing, you know, 916 contours by the lot, this Met Council line, and then, yeah, 914, you know, getting toward Fenway, but it's, you know, the, I don't recall what the, you know, how deep the Met Council line is. I guess the sewer plan doesn't show that. But based on Ryan's calculations, doing the math, it rises too high. So you need to raise the road in order to give enough cover on top of that.
Correct. Okay.
Other questions? Commissioner Black?
Donovan, I just a couple of comments. The northernly cul-de-sac, I'm not sure what's happening there, but I would suggest that that be extended to their outer limit of the property. If it's not, sometime in the future, there could be quite a squabble over who pays for and how you extend the road. I don't know where that road's going or what the ultimate plan is. But if that road, and it looks like it's going to go up to the north, then it should be extended all the way to the north, in my opinion. The other thing is, a couple of comments, I agree with your city engineer, or with our city engineer regarding tying into the metropolitan interceptor pipe. You know, the Metropolitan Council puts in the interceptor pipe to provide access for cities to, for future growth and development. That pipe, interceptor pipe typically is there for the city then to tie in with a trunk line. And then the city trunk line extends out with city laterals to provide development. In my experience, Met Council does not look upon allowing regular contacts by private developers into their interceptor line. That normally doesn't happen, and I wouldn't expect it to be happening here. So I see a problem with sanitary sewer here.
Well, no, to be, to be clear, I mean, these would be, you know, public, the trunk line, the one running, you know, in the road, would be a public sewer.
I know, I know it'd be a public line, but it'd be a public line, and it only serves a few lots. The Met Council puts in that interceptor line so that the city can plan for future growth by putting in their own trunk line connecting to the metro line, one connection to the metro line, and then multiple connections to the city line. You know, that trunk line that's put in by the city is typically done, and then there are lateral assessments and area assessments to whoever will be able to tie into that lateral line. This is kind of hodgepodge planning for sewer to serve this area of the city. And I think that needs, a different plan needs to be looked at, in my opinion. The second opinion, or the second comment is on what the city engineers comment on looping the water main. I know that's very important. I know when you extend a water main a long ways, and it's a dead-end extension, the water becomes very stagnant over times that not only can it become very stagnant, be problems for the households, but also if there's a, if there's a water main break, there's no other access for water to provide into the neighborhood. So looping is very important, too, when I see that as kind of a problem here, that we're not looping water. That's my only comment.
Other questions on the staff report? Would the developer like to present any or answer questions, and commissioners? If you could walk up to the podium, state your name.
Jamie Jensen. I'm the developer on the project. Initially, we had a concept plan drawn up, and I don't know if any of you have seen this. It's for 53 lots, and it came in on the triangle that you see, and went across the top, and went all the way over to the other side of Tanner's Brook Golf Course, and came out here. Now, if we want to talk about water to start with, this would have...
Can we use the camera up above?
Yeah.
To pull that up on our screens? There's a slide-out on the side of the podium, to your right. If we pull that out and set it down, there's a camera straight up over your head that'll be able to pull that up, and we can see what you're pointing to.
See how much of this I can show you?
Thank you.
Yeah, just like this?
And then, when he gets it on there, you can just move it over.
Okay.
And we have to hold this side, because this is your existing.
Yeah, alright.
Testing, one, two. It's a little out of focus.
Well, let me, let me move on to another while he's doing that.
There we go, we got a picture now.
Oh, alright, there we go. What you see here,
Yeah.
That's the original triangle, right there. We did not have a plan for the lower section at this point yet. We're dealing with the gentleman down just south of that. He happens to be a very close friend of my brother-in-law, and he's very interested in becoming part of this. So we wanted to join him in when we did the lower part. However, when there was the concern about purchasing property from the city, and that there may be a bar to that, in order to bring sufficient weight to the project, we added that lower part in, so that we'd get 17 lots. Let me just back up for just a second on this. We're here with the Planning Commission on a concept plan. And I guess this is, I've never come before any board before on a concept plan. And I'm not quite sure what you guys can do on this, because this is, the concept plan is all about utilities and roads, and that's all, that's all staff and engineering stuff. I, I think it's a very, it's a heavy burden on you to try and give advice on something that's very technical at this point.
Well, we can handle it.
Yeah. No, no, I don't question that. I don't question that. It's just, it's just a difficult step. I'm doing a 19-lot development in St. Paul, and I went down last week to start the process. And I talked to the planner, and he called in the sewer man, and he called in the woman in the water, and we had about five people, and we did the concept plan in an hour. And they presented me with the application for the preliminary plat. So, going from meeting to meeting to meeting on this, and we're just at the preliminary, I mean, we're just at the concept plan, seems very burdensome on you. But moving to, the first question I think was about water. The plan that we have here would bring water down, and I've talked with Ryan, your engineer, several times about this. There's a 12-inch main up at the roundabout. That could come down, it's about 1,700 feet, could come down to service this. If we went all the way across, we could then go back up the other side of the city property and meet into the 16-inch main that's up by the YMCA, thereby looping it all for the whole lower region here. So it'd be very beneficial to everyone if we could do that. So, the water is available, we could loop it, but without working this whole project, we're sort of, our hands are tied until we work something out with the city to purchase this property, and then we could loop it all through. The next question is sort of about sewer. And I spoke with Ryan several times about the sewer. He doesn't have any problem with the sewer. He understands where it is. He told me about the elevation. But one of the other things that we wanted to do, and one of the things you touched on, is making it available to other people in the area, which I think is something that I would want to be, I would be in favor of. What we would do would be to bring the sewer line out here where it would be available to any of the other regional property owners, and then force main back into the Met Council line. So taking that advice from him, I went down to the Met Council yesterday and met with Tim O'Donnell, who's in charge of the interceptor, and he put me in charge of the engineer for the interceptor, and we went over this. I sent him the picture, and he was able to bring it up himself. And I explained to him what Ryan's concerns were, and he says, "I understand his concerns. We don't have any problem with that. We believe you can use it there." So according to the Met Council, the sewer line is okay.
The two taps.
The one or two?
One or two taps.
He didn't indicate one or two. But the idea of having one at the top, and then bringing it in from below, that makes good sense, so that we would only be tapping once. We can tap twice, but we only, we would only be tapping once. We can tap twice, but we only, we would only be tapping once. Again, on the sewer line also, it would be very advantageous, again, for the project. You don't have to do it if you don't want, but if I could purchase that property to the north, we could be bringing, right here is where the interceptor line comes across, and we could bring it down the road and out to a spot where it'd be available to everybody. Without the city property, we have to go 700 feet across the top of the golf course to access the sewer line, bring it over to our street, and out into Fenway. Then if the city does wish to sell it, we have to abandon that 700 feet and build it again. So it would be beneficial if I could purchase that 17 acres to do the whole project. That would save the sewer, that would loop the water, and I don't believe that you're going to have any other, I, I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, I don't expect that you want to make any use of property north of a golf course other than residential. So I think my, from my appearances, that you wanted residential here. I started with this project a little over a year ago, and I never want to come into any city and invest money on a deal that's going nowhere. So I went around to everybody I could find and presented this project and said, I'd like to do this, what do you think? We're in favor of development. We'd like to see it come through. Where do you want to do it? It's here. That looks good to us. So I did this plan, and I'm tens of thousands of dollars into it, and I'd like to do this type of a project. Now, with this talk about, about the city property, I've, I've backed it off to the 17 lots, but I'd like to do the whole thing if that's available. So I don't know what kind of direction or advice you want to give on, or anything like that, but I think it makes more sense. If it's eventually going to be residential, it's zoned residential. Your 2020 comp plan has it residential. Your 2040 comp plan has it specifically cut out to be residential. Right now, it's sort of a mixed use. This lower section is all residential, and the northern half of the, of the Headwaters property is a different, is a different heading. But this one is specifically residential, so I'd like to do that if I can. You'll note, I hope you'll note, when you see this, that I haven't asked for any variances, and I, and I don't ask for variances. Development is difficult enough as it is, so whenever I'm meeting with my engineers and I'm surveyors, I say, don't, don't move a lot line over to get me an extra lot, don't try and squeeze something. Just do whatever the city rules are from start to finish. And that's what we have here, is that's what we've got with the 17 lots. I, I understand that the city is going to do a couple of studies. They're going to do a wetland delineation of the property and going to do a phase-one environmental study of it. And, and that was approved the other day by the EDA, and, and that's going to take about four months to do that. I offered to do that for the city, to hire the contractors to pay for it and present the results to the city. According to the plan made by the city, it's going to take four months to the end of July to get that done. And it would, I presume it would take me about three weeks. So I, I would prefer to, to pay for it, it's about $10,000, and to present you with the results. That was, that was turned down, but still, I wish to do that. So I don't know what kind of advice you, you have today, or what you want to do on it, or something like that, but I believe, I'd like to go forward with the city sewer and city water and get those planned out and find out for myself whether this worked. Because if it doesn't work, I don't want to spend any more money. But from what I've, what I've been told by the professionals, it's going to work. So I don't know if there are any questions for me, but...
There are any questions from commissioners?
I have one quick one.
Commissioner Black?
Yeah.
Mr., is it Jensen?
Jensen, yes.
Jensen, you said that, did you say the city's going to do the wetland delineation?
The city is going to do a wetland delineation. I've already done a wetland delineation for myself.
Oh, you're talking on the city property?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I've already done my wetland donation, except for the soil borings. They couldn't be done in the winter.
Got it.
Other questions of the developer?
You said the Met Council said that you could tap in at both places?
We only talked about tapping in at all. We didn't talk about two taps. We just talked about tapping in at all. And when he said, what we'd like to do is tap in, bring it out to the street, and force main back into the interceptor, that made a lot of sense. So that we could do all the way out to the end of, of all the lots we want to do, we could gather all the sewer line in at a low spot, bring it up with a lift station and put it back into the interceptor. And he said that was, that, they're satisfied with that. So we didn't actually talk about two, we just talked about the one.
I misunderstood.
Other questions to the developer? Commissioner Miller?
Yes. I'm sorry.
Mr. Jensen?
Yes.
We are, in my opinion, I'm hoping you hope and believe this, too, that we really want building and development in our city. And I'm 100% in favor of this, even though the city, I know, is, is kind of wanting us to not move this forward, but we would love to see more development, and I agree. I think we should let it be in your hands, and if the Met Council is willing to work with you, we should move forward.
Thank you.
Commissioner Batty?
Mr. Jensen, I'm, I'm an architect, so I, on the periphery of what you do, but I work with developers on a regular basis, so I understand the process. And I'm, I'm, I'm getting some conflicting information here, and I'm, that's what I'm trying to get to the bottom of. You know, it seems like there, you know, I understand the, the uncertainty with the city land and that sort of thing, but the, part of, you know, the developmental process in the city of Forest Lake, as I understand it, is, is, is coming to grips, you know, first of all, is, is where it is in relationship to the Musa line, and, and then where, where are utilities, sewer and water, where they actually come to? And, you know, is there a, is there a plausible, is there a reasonable plan, reasonable from the standpoint of being financial? Because I understand, you know, the whole side of the financing of, you know, of developing property and the cost of it, and then, then the sale of it. But I, I'm, I'm baffled here as to why we're getting conflicting information on, on the sewer here. I know enough about sewers to know that there is more than one way to skin the cat. There's more than one way to do it. Force mains, for me, I mean, more, more often than not, I see them as temporary solutions. But you're talking, if I understood you right, you're talking about a forced main here that would be a permanent solution. It must be a forced main from a, a lift station that would be developed somewhere here to the west of this, this main Met Council line. Is that...
Right.
Talk to me a little bit about, just a little bit more about that.
Well, and, and as Mr. Hart indicated, we could raise the road and bring in fill and that type of thing, but leaving that out of the question, what we would like to do, because I would like to develop other parts of this neighborhood, is I would like to have a deep enough sewer right on Fenway, coming right off of the project. I'd like to have it deep enough to service much more area here. And to do that, we, we could service it, you know, service this whole project and then more around. But our only source of sewer is that, is that interceptor. That's all we've, that's all we've got. So without tapping into the interceptor in some fashion, nothing in this area can develop.
So, so you, you think that it is financially feasible to do this forced ma, you know, lift station, forced main type setup here that would, would allow for the development of, of more, more property than what would be included in this development right here?
I think so. I'm, I'm not entirely certain. We haven't gotten to that point. Actually, I mean, quite literally, we're not past the concept phase yet.
Okay. All right. Now, I'll, you know, I'm, I'm certainly willing to, you know, to give you some slack on that. But it just, that, from the way I understand how the development process works, the sewer and water are such important pieces to the puzzle, I would think that you would, before you went very far, you would, you would want to have a handle on, I want to have a handle. I, I mean, I'm not going to recommend some, you know, some simple local connection to the, 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 the main line there just to service this.
Right.
But if I'm gonna, I'm, I'm also interested in, in figuring out, not just out of hand categorically saying, you can't do this. That's not me. Everybody on this group, except for the new guy, knows that. And, but I, I gotta have more information here to, to, to know whether, you know, this kind of thing can actually work. Because to me, that, this hinges, you know, this, even doing, you know, i- if there is a way to do this piece and to allow this, you know, this larger development, and to allow development, let's just say, across the road, I happen to know that there's, there is, will be land available over there as well. But that's not part of the, you know, what's been presented to us here. And I think that's probably part of, I don't mean to put words in Donovan's mouth, but I'm guessing, or let's just say, staff in general, that their concern is that, you know, not enough information has been presented for us to be able to, 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 to address that. And I'm not trying to get you to spend money.
No, 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 and I'm not, but that was one of my first comments, is I don't know what you guys can do at this point, because we're just, you just don't have enough information. We're not to the point where we have developed this to the, where, where you can have that information. I haven't given the engineer and the surveyor the go-ahead until we get through these, these, these concept steps.
But, okay, fine, but non-engineer, nothing wrong with that, non-engineer zoning administrator ran a simple calculation, distance slope thing, and came up with not enough depth.
Actually, that was Ryan that did that.
Well, whoever did.
Yeah.
That was the engineer.
Yeah.
You know.
And that was my discussion with him on Monday night, and he said, oh, yeah, we'll just put it deeper, we'll put it out in Fenway, and then we'll have a forced main. That was about as much conversation as he, as he went into to say how he was going to solve it. That was agreed to by the Met Council. So right now, the two people who I think are most knowledgeable about it, not my engineer, but the Met Council engineer and your engineer, both say it's feasible. As you say, I don't have the answers right now, but the professionals I've talked to...
Don't, I think this group is, is knowledgeable enough to, to, to understand, you know, kind of how, what it would take to, to make this thing work, and, and the things that we look at and that we are, we are concerned about. We can, you know, apply these, you know, even just to this piece. But, you know, if there is a bigger picture, and clearly you wouldn't lay this out this way unless there was, you know, unless you had something more in mind, at least that would be my assumption. But I, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out why, you know, Donovan is, you know, just kind of out of hand saying, well, no, this isn't going to work.
But he's not just saying out of hand.
Yeah. Yeah, I, the same thing.
And I guess I was looking for maybe a little bit more information from, from you that would maybe allay some of...
Well...
...fears that maybe he has, and I'm probably going to be talking for him.
You have the information I have on the, on the engineering of the, of the sewer, as I understand it. Now, following this meeting, I'll go ahead and start on the preliminary plat, and that will trigger the engineer also to start working on calculations to make sure that it all works. I do want to add that this project, away from the engineering parts of it, is very favored by the business that's there, the golf course. They're very much looking forward to having homes on the golf course. There are none on the golf course now, and that would be a great boon to the business there. We're looking at putting in, if we could buy the city property, we would be looking at putting in 59 homes, call it 60 for the math. If homes sell for about $400,000 apiece, that makes this a $24 million project. So when you ask, is it worthwhile for me to put the sewer out there? Absolutely it is. It's a very good project. There's a builder, Forest Lake builder, Tom Carlisle, I don't know if you're familiar with him, he's been here for over 20 years. He wants to build all the houses. He's been to meetings, he was texting me a couple of times today about it. So it would be helping both the golf course and the Forest Lake builder putting up houses with how many score people who would be working on, on all of that. It'd be very beneficial. I think that we have a few stumbling points. We always have a few stumbling points. If development was easy, everybody would do it.
So, so where we're, where we're, at least where I'm at here is, I want to, I want to make sure, I, I'm not, I'm not concerned about mountains, molehills, roadblocks, that sort of thing. I, I'm just concerned, I, I want to get my arms around enough information here that I can say, yep, I think, you know, if we can overcome these obstacles, we can make this thing work. You know, that's, that's the point that I, that I want to get to, and I think probably most everybody sitting at this table.
I don't want to spend any more money.
Right, and we don't want to force you to spend money.
Then, then, you know, I mean, if it's not going to work, I want to turn that faucet off, you know, but, but my feeling is that it will.
I believe Commissioner Young had her hand up for questions next.
Mr. Jensen, I cannot approve a concept plan if you, your belief that you can purchase city land is an integral part of you making the math work. I can't approve a concept plan that you don't have control of the land that you are putting down the concept plan for. So as long as I have your assurance that your, the viability of this project to you is not dependent on the city land, I can go to my next...
It's not dependent.
Great. I can go to my next step of consideration. The city water and sewer funds are not general fund taxes in the city. And so do you understand that, that it would be your obligation to pay for those 12-inch and 16-inch lines from the existing city stubs?
Not according to your engineer. It'd be my obligation to put a 4-inch line, and the city would pay for anything larger. That's what he told me.
Okay. Yes, but then you have to realize that the Water and Sewer Fund is not an infinite fund, funds plural, and that there are projects online that the city is committed to doing on their existing infrastructure. And I don't know right now where the city would be in being able to put out the funds for that 12-inch and that 16-inch on the water side. And I'm assuming that you would equally want the city to pay for the size of the tap-in to the Met Council line, and I don't know if our sewer fund is in a position to do that. So quite frankly, that's one of the challenges of doing a development in an area that is not fully developed. In St. Paul, it's nice. All the water lines are there, all the sewer lines are there, most of the roads are existing there. You got a piece of Fenway there that's not paved. And so that paving is not needed but for this development. So there are some considerations that are different, which is why our rules say that, that you do need to run a concept plan, just to make sure that, that it is consistent with the ability of the city to provide the city stuff. And that it meets with, with the, the city's vision for the area. I have some, some concerns about water service. I don't have an insurance that the city is ready to lay those lines and, and has the dollars and the ability to do that, or if it's even in our one, two, or five-year plan.
And I want to know that right now. You know, I, and I, I guess I want to know that, because I, if you're not ready for development, I want out. If Forest Lake isn't ready for development, I don't want to, you know, I'm a trailblazer. A developer's always a trailblazer. I'm always starting with something that's been vacant, you know? And so I'm coming out, and I'm always doing something new. This one is attractive because it's on a golf course. There are 1,000 acres that I can see from standing on the golf course that are vacant. There's abundant room. This is attractive because it's a golf course. But it's a partnership between you and me to put this together, because it's, because I'm going to do it, I'm going to do, build the 59 houses, I'm a go. gonna go. And this is still yours, you know? Now, it's gonna have my name on it, and people are gonna say, what have you done before? I did this thing in Forest Lake, I did the one in Lionel Lakes, I'm doing one in St. Paul, I've done a dozen in Blaine. You know, you can, I can show you these that I've done, this is another one. Did, did that one in Forest Lake fall into a swamp? Well, yes, it did. Okay, we don't wanna deal with you, all right? Now, see, I don't, I don't need any of that, and that's why I don't ask for variances. Everything is right down the line on this. Now, you ask, where are the funds coming from? My whole story here is, I'd like to buy the land. I'd like to buy seventeen acres from the city. That would provide sufficient funds to do anything we need to do here. So, but again, I mean, if, if your, if your funds are not ready, if you're not ready, I, I don't wanna spend any more money.
Again, I, I don't have that knowledge, but that is something that as a planning commissioner, who's hung around cities for a long time, there's a flag there, to me.
Should be more than one, should be, should be a bunch.
Well, I have, I have several. I have, I do have several. But, but when you speak, much of the time, you know, making this really fly for you is contingent on those seventeen acres.
It's not contingent on it, but it would make it so much nicer for me and for you, I believe.
Thank you.
Commissioner Black, I believe you had your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Couple of comments first. I, I think the commission, this is the first time tonight for me to see the overall concept plan. I, I've only seen what was submitted to the staff. So, you're putting up a larger exhibit plan, concept plan, beyond what we're being asked to approve tonight. The other thing is that I don't think your concept plan matches our concept plan in terms of the road line, alignment and, and layout, the lot layout. I don't, I think it's a little different.
No, it is, yeah, it's a little different.
But, I'm also not inclined to go with the staff's recommendation for flat-out denial here. I think concept plans are for us to comment and, and give you advice of what you wanna do. And I think you would find that Forest Lake is very much in favor of development. We do want more development, but we also wanted to do it in the right way. And, and I, boy, you got the tiger by the tail here. That's, this is a tough project to, to proceed with. My, my comment would feel like, it would feel better to go to the council with some statements on our feelings on this development and not just a flat-out denial. And I would start with, this development does meet the 2030 Comprehensive Plan Land Use Designation of the twenty, of the low-density, medium-density residential density. It also meets the proposed 2040 Plan Low to Medium Density Residential. So, it conforms with our existing comp plan and our proposed new comp plan. The zoning is MXR-1, which allows for single-family development. So, that's on your, on your side too, you know, way to go, you've got the zoning rate. It's in the MUSALINE. We, we designate our area to be served with the Metropolitan Urban, Urban Service Area, and, and indeed, you are in the MUSALINE. It's another point that I think we can acknowledge to the council that that's in the developer's favor. You're also within the Utility Staging Plan of the 2030 Comp Plan. The 2030 Comp Plan has its property in the 2016 to 2020 Urban Staging Plan, Utility Staging Plan, so you're, you've got that going for you too. What you don't have going for you, and what I think we have to be cautious on, is that we need a plan for an acceptable, an acceptable plan for public utilities in this area. Not just serving your land, but maybe serving that land to the north that you just showed us with, with your expanded concept plan. Maybe that makes sense, it's the first time I've seen it, but I, I have no idea if that's, that makes sense or not. It might, but not, not only your land, the Taylor land, this whole area, we need to start looking at how to serve this area with sewer and water. And, and it can't come from you as a developer, it really has to come from the city on our planning and our layout for utilities, and how, and then how would you fit into our plan, in my opinion. Then the other, the other part is Fenway. Fenway needs to be improved. We, we can't allow development on a, on a, on a gravel road. As a matter of fact, I drove down it the other day and almost got stuck. You know, it, it, it needs improvement. And that's another issue that has to be addressed. Are you gonna pay for that road to, to, to Blacktop from, from the north all the way to one-hundred-and-ninety? One-hundred-and-sixty?
No, I'm not going down one-hundred-and-ninety.
No, I'm not sure you're not going to, but that, that is something that needs to be addressed. We can't just start approving plans for land development with, with gravel roads. Then the last thing is, is how does your plan fit in with the development of the surrounding properties, which includes all the land around it? We, we can't look at it as an island on, on its own. And I, and I think that those would be my suggestions to the council, that you have to, you as a developer, have to work closely with the city staff on those issues. I, I think, I don't wanna send you away and say, don't do development, but I, I think when you start tackling those issues and start looking at the cost and how it's gonna affect your property, your, your pocket, you might be going to Blaine or somewhere else to do the...
And, and the sooner the better that I learn that. I, I don't disagree.
I don't wanna deny you, I don't wanna send you away, but I, I think you gotta look at this thing with your eyes open.
Well, I, you know, and I, and I looked at your 2030 Comp Plan and your 2040 Comp Plan, and you've got it scheduled for about forty-three thousand new residents, which is about twenty-five hundred new residents a year. And, and I believe I'm the only development currently before the city. Now, you know, fifty-three homes would bring in one-hundred-and-fifty people. I'm not scratching the surface for what your planned increase in, in, but it's a start, and it opens up all the land. I've talked extensively with both the Taylor families, they're both in favor of it. Schwintek, just to the south of me, all his kids are in or out of college or something like that, he's ready to make a move. Mr. Johnson, the next one down, he says, he hates living there because he can't use the west side of his house, 'cause all the golfers come down and this, the, the dust blows into his front yard, he can't use his whole front yard. When is that road coming through? Well, I don't know if you, how, I'm sure you've all been involved for development for a long time. You never get a hundred percent of neighbors in favor of it. But along here, I've got a hundred percent favored from the neighbors, which is, which is very nice. And, and I, if they haven't called you, or if, you know, please feel free to reach out to them or whatever along that. But, yeah, I, I think that there are very, very many positive parts of it. I know that I've got a challenge, but that's sort of what I do.
I think when the city starts putting together an overall plan for road improvements, utility improvements, sanitary sewer and water main, and lateral assessments and aerial assessments, I think you'll be different. I think there'll be some people at the podium opposing you.
Potentially so.
Are there other questions for the developer?
Why do you think that, Mike?
Why do I think that? Because people don't always agree with development. People are, there's, there's always mixed feelings. People, people to the south right in here have ten-acre lots, and people, you know, they're, as development occurs, there's always issues on who pays for what. And, and that's just, and, and I'm, I'm not trying to discourage you, I'm just saying, you got a tough one here. This is, this is not gonna be an easy plan to put together.
Then help me, please.
Well, I don't know how much we can do.
Okay.
We're, we're, I, in my opinion, we ought to pass comments on to the council that you're, you're, you're in compliance with the comp plan, you're in the MUSA, you're in the, the plan for orderly extension utilities, but you and the city engineer need to put together a plan that's acceptable to all.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's gotta work.
Are there other questions from commissioners before we bring it back to us? Mr. Keen?
No, I don't have a question for you.
Another question? All right, thank you, Mr. Jensen. We generally let members of the public speak. Is there anybody from the public that wanted to speak on this particular item? We'll bring it back to the commission for consideration then. Commissioner Miller?
You know, we've met with a, a number of different developers over the years, and recently, we just met with someone who wanted the city to buy a piece of commercial property in our city and spend a lot of money, and, and most of us determined that would not be a good investment for the city. And at that time, I indicated that if the city really wanted to put a good foot forward to really bring development to our city, we would go do some things that some of the other cities are not doing, like maybe put some utilities in and help some of our developers, maybe put in some roads, maybe put in some shared expenses with developers so we can start to build out our city. We have a perfect opportunity with a gentleman here that wants to take a plan on an area and start developing it, that maybe can bring some more growth to our city. In my opinion, if the city's gonna invest in anything, this is what they should invest in. Not buying commercial pieces of property and tearing down buildings and hoping we can fill it with a parking lot or whatever it might be. We wanna create tax revenue for our city, we wanna create more progress for our city. If we don't help some of these developers, our city's not gonna get developed. The only way most developers come into cities is if we share in some of that cost with them. The cost is so prohibitive today to come in and do something, that I think this is a great opportunity for us to partner with a developer who's willing to spend his money and have at it. That's my opinion.
Other commissioners?
Just a quick question. At the, at the present time, well, a while back, and I'm not sure council members what the present policy is, but to pave a gravel road was a hundred percent on the landowners on, on that gravel road. And that would be not only a significant policy change for the city to go in and pave the gravel roads, but it is a, an expense that would, especially in this particular area, is not budgeted that I know of in this year. In addition, I'm, I consider myself fortunate in some ways. I don't pay any water and sewer fees, I have my own well and I have my own septic. On the other hand, I'm stuck with that if I ever need to redo those. Since my well's about three hundred feet deep, that's gonna be a pain in the tail. Extending the, the lines before we have more intense development in this area, again, is gonna be a significant expense that I'm not sure where the city is on its ability to do that within the timeline that Mr. Jensen is looking for. So, that would be, if, if I were going to make a, a recommendation, a request to the council, I would ask them to evaluate that as soon as possible. With the, I mean, the city has an existing plan for the orderly development of water and sewer, and, and we are a little bit behind that plan, partially because of the dollars needed, were needed for other infrastructure, like our lift stations. And, and through a desire to keep the water and sewer rates as low as possible. You know, fronting that money is, would be part of their, of their rate structure. So, before I can say, yay, gangbusters, let's go ahead and, and approve this plan, my caution is, how are the utilities actually going to be done? I, I was a little disappointed that Mr. Jensen has, has done a lot of developments, but didn't really understand what we were asking for when we said, how are you going to provide water and sewer services? So, I, that's a big concern for me, that, how are the utilities gonna be handled? How are the street improvements going to be handled? What is gonna be the financial burden of the city? I understand the desire for, for more rooftops, because that will get people in, in the city some of the things that they want. On the other hand, I'm also balancing the existing residents and their acceptance of the dollar burden for those new developers.
Donovan, could you walk, could you walk me through a couple of things here? If, if memory serves me right, the development off of North Shore Trail that we did a year or two ago, we could only force that developer to pave the road adjacent to its property and not beyond that. And so, if we looked at this properly, similarly, we would only be legally allowed to force Fenway to be paved adjacent to this property and not paved all the way up to the roundabout or somewhere south, correct?
Yeah, I mean, I believe that, I mean, in the meeting summary, you know, Ryan did write that the, the property would, you know, that the developer would be responsible for the cost of paving existing gravel on Fenway from the roundabout to the southern plat boundary.
From the roundabout.
And would be responsible for the cost to construct half of Fenway Avenue to its ultimate street typical section, including pedestrian facilities, the length of its actual plat along east side of Fenway. So, you know, the, the, so we're looking for some, some paving of gravel, you know, north of the property, but that's what we, that's what we desire right now. I believe, you know, state statute does limit us as far as what we could require. But, that, except that which is exactly, you know, adjacent to the, the development.
And then, what is the mechanism for water? Would the developer be fully required to pay for all of the upfront costs to run two pipes north initially and then be reimbursed, or can you walk the commission through on that?
Yeah, let me kinda clarify a couple of things. The developer would be responsible for extending an eight-inch sewer line from, from Headwaters Parkway to the development. The, if it was need to be oversized, that would be a portion that he would be, that would be rebated. You know, it's currently a ten-inch line along Fenway there. And those, it's more of a rebate because there's sewer area and, and water charges. They're, they're designed to pay for the extension of the infrastructure. And, and it's, it's part of the, the fee schedule with the city. So, you know, perhaps if it was a ten-inch line, it would just be a two-inch increment that, where that, that would cause that, that rebate. As far as the, the sixteen-inch line on the eastern side, Ryan's not sure if that's needed, so he needs to, once we receive, we'll go into the design phase, that would be, he would run water tests, you know, he'd run his model to see if there's adequate pressure, you know, for the development. So, it's uncertain right now, but it's, you know, it's, but that could be a requirement.
Are there other questions? Commissioner Keen?
Yeah, Donovan. Okay, if he runs the test, then there's, there's gonna be more development north of this property, correct? All the way up to Fenway? I mean, all the way up to, uh...
Headwaters.
Uh, Headwaters?
We could assume so, sure.
Someday.
Eventually, someday.
Someday.
So, they're gonna need to be tapping in all this stuff too, correct?
Correct.
So, coming down Fenway, I, I guess, why would they put in sewer if he's putting in his own sewer line there and tapping in?
No, we'd just run water down Fenway. I mean, it's...
Or just the water?
Yeah, yeah.
Correct. And is the city gonna be partial to help him out with part of that, or is that all developer only?
That is, is, I mean, the way the development currently set up, the city policy is that the developer pays for that, except if there's oversizing required, and then there's that rebate.
So, if the developer puts that in, any development north of there, are they gonna be allowed to tap into that?
Certainly, it's a, it's a city, it'll be a city line.
They're gonna be more fees then for, I mean, like rebates or anything, since he's putting in, you know, so many hundreds of feet of it and paying for it?
I mean, the way it's set up currently, though the developer, you know, builds it and then, you know, other people can, can tap in. I mean, for instance, you know, all the Headwaters properties, that, that water line was extended, and the property owners in the south, you know, when that's, you know, when that's developed, that property's developed, they will tie into that line. I mean, it's a similar situation.
Yeah, I, I kinda got all that, but I, I was just wondering if, if this, since the city owns all that northern property there, if there's somehow, we could help him out with that, with, to a point? You know, to, to work together with developers and, you know, and this would be just like a, a start, 'cause we could do that with other developments throughout the city. If, if it, if it comes up to that. Like, that's, remember, what was it, last year, a year before, we had the development way down off of, they wanted to do that farm, that they were like half-acre lots or something?
Hundred-ninetieth?
Hundred-ninetieth?
Hundred-and-eight.
The other golf course.
Yeah. Yeah.
But that was too, that was too far for sewer and water.
Well, for water.
There was nothing.
Yeah, there's nothing there.
Well, then, that would be, I mean, that would be ultimately a council decision, but that would be, would be a, a big shift in policy.
Well, 'cause I, I don't, I don't know where all the, you know, what the city has for funding, for projects, and especially, I don't know with, with Mr. Jensen's proposal there, to purchase city property, which is, who knows where that is sitting in, in, you know, on the table or in the books, or, you know, it, it might not even be possible for him to purchase that property. But what we're looking at here today, that's what I'm looking at, is this, this concept plan for the two sections, and I just wanna be clear that about the water lines, and he's putting in the sewer from there over to the... from there over to the metal line. That's it for today. Okay.
Other questions or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would, I'd propose a motion. It'd be a motion in the form of making comments of the city council regarding this concept plan. And the comments would be, number one, the planning commission recommends that this development does comply with the densities of the 2030 comprehensive plan and a 2040 comprehensive plan. Planning commission also recommends, or recognizes, that the property is owned MXR1 single-family residential. Planning commission also recognizes that the property is within the city municipal line. And the planning commission recognizes, excuse me, that the property is within the utility staging plan of the 2030 comprehensive plan, designating the area for utilities within the period of 2016 to 2020. Planning commission further wants to comment to the city council that we are concerned regarding the need for an acceptable plan for public utilities, both sewer and water, that serve the subject property and surrounding properties. Planning commission is also concerned with the need for improvement of Fenway Street and who would benefit and pay for that improvement to Fenway Street serving this development. And planning commission also is concerned regarding how does this subdivision plan on what we are reviewing here fit into an overall plan on surrounding properties, including the city property? If this development is dependent upon future roadway connection to city-owned property, and it's not going to happen, then we are concerned about that. That would be my motion.
There's been a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make some comments here. I was, I'm, I'm in favor of this kind of a motion. If a motion had been put on the, on the table here to categorically deny this thing, I would have voted against it. I have, I think Commissioner Black has done a really good job here of articulating, you know, kind of both sides of this thing. And I think, I think that unless, Donovan, you can tell us, it's not legal to do this way, this is the kind of thing that I think we need to do. It leaves the door open for the developer. It, the other side of it is that the city council and/or staff are, you know, are going to have to work to get, you know, if this is going to go forward, you know, there's obviously some things that are going to have to be worked out. And I want to leave those kind of doors open. I think there's enough good here, enough potential good here, that it should be, it may spur, you know, the city here to look at Fenway and the property, the city property along Fenway there. It seems to me that we have enough of an opportunity here to, to do something positive that it's worth leaving the door open.
Other comments?
Yeah, I, I agree with him. To get something started down in that area, I think, once it gets started, then other people will follow in on that. I like the idea, there's a lot of questions, you know, especially with the sewer. But one of the, one of the things I, I don't know if it's in our policy or what, but just by putting in the water line, why, why do we have to block out that road?
It's not because of the water line. It's because of the number of cars. A dirt road is usually good for about 50 trips a day. And my guess is with that number of houses, you're going to have a lot more than 50 trips a day.
Was that 13 houses?
Is there other discussion? Mr. Miller?
And just one last comment. I think, again, if, if council reviews this, you know, if we're looking at partnering with anybody on anything, something like this, I think, is the best way to spend our money.
Other discussion? I'll give my comments. I think the proposal fits that area long-term. I, I think there's some serious question whether it's actually going to be feasible for this developer to be able to afford to do the major infrastructure pieces to make this viable. But I'm not going to base my decision tonight on that. I do like the, the method Commissioner Black is going through with listing off things. And I don't know that I necessarily want to add to your list. It's, I think, the longest motion I've seen since I've been on here. But I would like to add comments for the developer, should this thing move forward. I think that the city should, if this does eventually get to the next stage, that the cul-de-sacs that we put in here, that things like trails that we don't always require on cul-de-sacs that are short are required here in anticipation that that road will continue to go through, and that, that dots along those lines so that the long-term vision is met. I, very supportive of having one connection to the interceptor versus two, although I could be swayed if the Met Council, and I don't always agree with them, but I'll agree with them on how many connections they should have to their line. And I think that that should be looked at very carefully. I have, I have concerns with the, I know this was discussed at Park Board, and that didn't come up in the staff report, however, there's a, there's a question of should we, as a city, take park money, or should we take property? And I know that one of the things on our 2040 comp plan that Hugo commented on was something along the lines of they want the, their parkway to connect closer to our Fenway. And I've always envisioned that our Fenway would look more like a parkway versus just one plain-jane street with curbs and gutter on it. And so I would urge that the lots 1 and 7 on the northwest and the west piece be considered as, as park dedication land versus park dedication B's being entered, so that that could accommodate parks down the road. That's way down the road, but those are thoughts that, that I would share as pieces. And perhaps that means that we kind of start designing Fenway and not necessarily have it be a straight-line road, but have it have some medians in some different spots and, and move it so it has that parkway feel. It's one thought that I think that should be entertained in the discussion. The, the piece when this comes back, though, would be very, very dependent to me on the city study that's coming back. And I think that's two or three months out, am I right? And if the city report comes back and it's saying that the, the property to that north is very viable for uses that would not pair up to this, and that was going to be an industrial use, and then, and this would be better accommodated as a higher-dense use, or something along those lines, or, you know, restaurant space on a golf course. I don't think everything on a golf course necessarily has to be residential, but it would be very dependent on that study coming back, favorable for this type of development there, particularly the northern portion of it. So those are my comments. Are there other, is there other discussion?
Well, yeah, one. That Outlet B on the far southern, you know, where it's 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, it's Outlet B. Is that, is that just going to be like a holding pond down there? Or is that going to be developed later? Outlet B.
Much of that is, is a lot of it's for wetland.
Wetland?
And for ponding and stuff, so.
There's no room in there for a park? A small park?
We have talked, excuse me, we have talked briefly about using a little wider Fenway, and I don't necessarily oppose that. It's a, it's a great amenity to the project if they know that a parkway's coming through, as opposed to just a two-lane road. So a lot of that on that, on that side of the project is wetland.
Okay.
So, I mean, I could give it to you, I don't know if you could do anything with it.
No, it's fine. It's just, you know, looking at it on paper, it's, it's not really very
Sure.
... technical as far as.
It's so close to Fenway that having it as parkland is putting a little park in that Outlet B.
Is there other comments? I have one question for the author of the motion. Your first item on the motion was recommend compliance with regard to the 2030 and 2040 comp plans. Can you collaborate on your definition of that and where, how, how somebody might comply when there's a variance between those two plans?
Well, first of all, it was not a statement of recognizing that they do, this plan conforms to the 2030 plan and 2040 plan, but there is no, there is no, it is the same, isn't it? It's low dense, low to medium density residential on both plans for this area.
So it was, it was limited to the zoning versus detail in those plans?
My, my point to the council would be that we are recognizing that this development does fit in to the land use designation.
Gotcha. I might have misunderstood you. Thank you.
Okay.
Was there other discussion? Otherwise, we'll call the question. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No? Motion carries.
Keep going. Keep working on it.
Next on the agenda is status of the 24 comprehensive plan. Donovan, do you want to walk us through?
Yeah, certainly. I don't have anything prepared for this, just being a quick discussion item on, to update you on the status. On March 29th, the review period for the affected jurisdictions, that's anything from the school district to the watershed districts to adjacent communities, counties, in which they have an ability to comment on the draft plan. That review period ended, and I've been working with Bolton-Mink, the consultants who we contracted with, to assist us with this comp plan update. And on April 22nd, we'll have before the city council the full plan and request a adoption of a resolution to send that to Met Council for their review. That review could take 60, 90 days, maybe it's closer than 60-day period. So maybe by June, it'll come back to the city and we'll look for a formal adoption of the plan.
Yeah, just, I'm just curious, you said that the comment period is closed. Was there anything significant that, any significant comments by any of these bodies?
I'd say nothing that was unpredictable, unpredicted. In fact, Chair Langness did refer to one of the comments from the City of Hugo. They, they did, you know, said that their, their trail, you know, just west of Fenway didn't line up with the city trail, which city trails generally follow the road grid, you know, network. And actually, this coming Tuesday, in response to Bolton-Mink comments, in order to beef up the Parks and Trails chapter, we will be reconsidering that, you know, that trail area to actually, you know, perhaps, you know, line up closer, or even, you know, connect, provide some sort of conceptual connection to that Hugo trail. And so, and the other pieces, I mean, Hugo didn't like the 180th, you know, Interstate Exchange concept that
I wonder why.
You know, that the, our comp plan includes.
Hugo's wrong on that one.
Yeah. Mindad also didn't like it, which was also, that was expected. And then got some, Chisago County offered comments, but they're not required to, they're not, you know, within the Met Council jurisdiction. But it was pretty great because they, you know, provide some comments on, you know, the Harvard Creek Trail name and designation, some, some minor things, but I thought it was kind of endearing that they, that they, you know, took the time. And some things, you know, Washington County had some comments on the housing. I mean, these are things that we will actually just review as, as, just respond to, but we're not required to change anything. But there was nothing that I believe was significant enough, I'd bring it back before, you know, the planning commission or council to say, we should reconsider, you know, this element.
Go ahead, Susan. It's our discussion items we just talked.
Will you be providing those comments to us so that we can understand what the other jurisdictions had to say and think?
Certainly, yeah, I can do that, is a, you know, email to planning commission members, sure.
Thank you.
And of course, Mr. Black will get his, you know, signed, you know, bound copy, you know, upon adoption. As well as other members, too.
Was there anything you were looking for from us on this, Donovan?
No, no, I just wanted to say this is, is in the works, and just because in some ways you're, you're, you know, some of the parents of the plan.
We'll move on to other business, then. Was there anything from staff?
Still working through different development proposals. We do not have anything, let me think, we don't have anything for the April 24th agenda. And can I take any questions on anything you would like to ask?
Do we have any other single-family housing projects that have come before us that we're looking at right now?
Looks like on, on May 10th, we'll see the final plat, final PUD submitted by the Third Lake Estates, which was that 11-lot subdivision, you know, off Third Lake.
And I believe Councilmember Gerard is our new liaison. Did you have anything for us tonight?
Hey, we know you.
A lot happened while you were south in the winter.
Thank you. As Eric mentioned, I'll be the new liaison to the planning commission. I look forward to it. First of all, I'd like to welcome Justin to the planning commission. This is a great group. They're highly respected by the city council, so I think it should be an enjoyable time. Sometimes frustrating, but mostly enjoyable. Commissioner Langness, congratulations on chair. Ms. Young, congratulations on vice chair. The only other note that I have for you is the apartment complex on 4th and 11th came before the city council, and it was approved at, I think it was the last council or two council meetings ago. And I know that one thing that we've always been frustrated at when I sat on the commission was not getting feedback on, on where the projects finally ended up. And unless you're like Chair Langness, who attends the city council meetings religiously. So one of my plans is that these, I would like to give a regular update on any information like that. Any questions or comments I can bring back to the council?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see Mayor Baynes in the audience as well. Did you have anything for us today? All right. And for commissioners, maybe we'll give the opportunity to Mr. Brink first to tell us a little bit about himself and then any other updates.
I probably should have been a little bit more prepared for that, but I've been a lifelong resident of Forest Lake. I've had a lot of volunteering over the years and just been, when I heard this opportunity, I wanted to kind of take that to the next level. And it really is an honor for me to serve the citizens of Forest Lake, and I really look forward to that with this. So it looks like a great group, just kind of being silent, you know, here for this one meeting, but, yeah, I'm really, really excited to go forward with this. Big shoes to fill, too.
Others?
Yeah, I met with our city attorney a couple of weeks Yeah, I met with our city attorney a couple weeks ago, and, because, well, we, sometimes we ask for her, and sometimes, you know, I mean, anyway, I sat down with her and talked to her, and whenever we need her, she's available. She just needs a reasonable amount of time to reply and stuff, you know, can't be the last minute. She might be able to make it, she might not. Also, when people come in here and ask for a variance, we can add stipulations to any variance, as long as it's within means, within, like, we had the, the house over on the lake over there who wanted to build a garage, and that they had the two sheds out by the street, and then put, made them all into one, and, you know, which, when she found that out, that it was all put into one, she goes, that's, that's a whole other violation. So, she'd like to hear some of this stuff, that when we have questions, you know, maybe we can table it for, till our next meeting, and I don't, I suggest it to her that, you know, it's not every planning commissioner that's going to be calling or talking to her. I wanted to wait till after we got our new chairman and vice chair in, because I knew that was coming over just a matter of a couple of weeks. And my recommendation is that we, we have either one, if one's not available, the other one do be our contact person with our city attorney.
I think that actually has to go through staff, though, because the city attorney's a contract person.
Right. She said there's no charge.
Well, there's always a charge. I mean, you know, she's putting time in, so she's going to build the city, and I think we just have to be careful with that.
Yeah, it's not like we call her every day, but like, the last, in the last year or so, we've had a couple of, a couple of questions. A lot of it can be just answered over the phone. They don't, she doesn't have to come to the meetings.
But I don't think we should have direct line with the city attorney. I think we need to go through the city staff first, and then with our questions. I, well, I, maybe I'm wrong.
I mean, that is, that is preferred, also so that I can, whatever questions there are, I can broadcast them to the full Plan, Planning Commission as well, you know, so that we all, you know, we're working from equal information.
Code enforcement, who do, who do we notify about violations of code enforcement throughout the city?
I'd say I inform the zoning administrator.
And who is that?
That would be Donovan.
Myself.
I just want to make sure, because we, you know, we talk about all these violations, but yet they go on for weeks and months and...
Years.
Yeah.
No, no, I understand that, I, yeah, I can appreciate that perspective. There is, you can do it through the, you know, the city website, and also you could do it, you know, email to me.
I believe on the city website, you can even do it anonymously.
I'll put my name behind anything if I see it as, as wrong. I don't have a problem with that, but I mean, it just seems like there's not a whole lot being done about it, about things, certain ones. And, oh, how do we know when something's being, when, when there's a decision being made, when we send it to, okay, you discuss, work it out with the city? Now, we, a lot of times, we don't find out what happened, what those results were. I think we should either get the results of that, those discussions, like on, what was it, on Second Street concern with the school, the parking, because now the school moved into the other building, and they wanted to put like no parking or residential parking only, or, you know, we said, you know, work something out with the city, but...
Certainly, yeah. I mean, I think I could, I could be better on just kind of that follow-through, or just feel free to ask questions during this, this part of the, the agenda. And that one in particular, I can say that Ryan did forward me a, kind of a, a concept of, of no parking. And it's my role now to go, you know, do some door knocking to find out, does this meet, you know, is this what you want? Because not everyone, you know, affected was at that meeting, and, or they might want it longer, or they want, want it shorter. But Ryan has been working through that, and it's, you know, it's, it's in process.
So, the recommendation is no parking on that street, or just residential parking only? Have they had a sticker or something in their window?
It was, it was no parking, I can't recall exactly the extent of it, but it was no parking, I believe, on that, that eastern side, from, from 11th to basically that, you know, I think you'd call it 10th, but it's not much more than a big driveway.
So, when we make recommendations like that, can we, I think, we either make a recommendation that, okay, you, you just work it out with the city, and then the city comes back to us for final approval, or go to City Council for final approval? Because we don't know if any of this stuff ever gets done. I'm not saying you're not doing your job, but there's other people that are involved, too, and so, we make recommendations, we don't know what happens.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, in that, you know, in that role, Planning Commission is, you know, does, you know, has an advisory role, and those sorts of things, because it is City Council that actually, you know, passes a resolution to actually make those, you know, formal, formal actions occur. But I'm certainly willing to, you know, give you, give you follow-ups.
Yeah, just keep us updated.
You know, and feel free to prompt me, too.
Sure. Okay. That's it.
Is there anything else for other business? A motion of adjournment would be in order at this point?
Let's go move.
There's a motion and a second, it's not a debatable motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. No? Motion carries, we're adjourned.